Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members, to our Mayor, Clerk, and Treasurer in their absence, to our Chief of Staff, City Attorney, Administrative Staff here in the Council Chambers, members of the public here in the Council Chambers, and those viewing via our broadcast channel and YouTube Live. Welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the Public Comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a Request to Speak Public Comment card located on the table in the back of the chambers and hand it to me, the Deputy Clerk. At this time, we'll have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo?
Here.
We know that Councilman Barding is excused. Councilman Crowe?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here.
Councilwoman Tally?
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a quorum for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Tonight's regular agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, two minutes, three petitioner, four chairpersons report, five mayors report, six clerks report, seven treasurers report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, number twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment, and a motion will be in order to accept tonight's regular meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Crowe, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Agenda item 2A for approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, May 12, 2025, at 7:30 p.m.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on Monday, May 12 at 7:30.
Board.
Motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Crowe, for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, May 12 at 7:30 p.m. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Agenda item 2B for approval are the minutes from the special meeting executive closed session held on Monday, May 12, 2025, at 6:15 p.m. to discuss an attorney's opinion and the special meeting public hearing held at 6:30 of the same day for the proposed 2025-26 fiscal year budget for the City of Romulus pursuant to Section 9.3 of the Romulus City Charter.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes from the special meetings that were held, first at 6:15 and the second one at 6:30.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Jones, for the approval of the minutes for the special meetings at 6:15 and 6:30 p.m., respectively. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. There are no petitioners under tonight's agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, DePauw. I appreciate that. We're going to have some special meetings today, so just a couple of quick things. I do want to give a quick shout out to Jerry Frayer. Man, we had SimCOG out here. Was it this last Thursday, Wednesday? I can't even get my days together. But they came out and they toured our whole downtown and areas around our city, our businesses, and it was just amazing. Jerry, thank you for setting that up and SimCOG coming out. Some of the businesses, we kind of surprised, and they were just so happy to be included. We have one of our business owners here. Let me read some of the names that we hit on that day. It was just amazing. Bubby's Pizza, Polka Dots, Marveline's, Dave's Barber Shop, Mary Ann, well, we didn't get to do Mary Ann Banks Park. We'll do that this week. Captain Nemo's, Walters, The Artisan Reserve, Eagle Alley, we'll do this week. We went, dropped by the high school, went by the rack, went by Starbucks, went by Tropical Smoothie. Some of these we just drove by. Leonidas drove by, the flower shop on Merriman. It was just a magnificent day of touring our city, seeing our business owners, and just the business and things that's building up in our downtown. We may not be quite where other people are, but let me tell you, work is being done. So thank you, Jerry, for coordinating that with SimCOG, and it was just exciting. And it was raining, and it was still exciting. It was still an exciting day. So I just want to thank all our business owners out there who support and run their business in the City of Romulus. More to come. I'm excited about what we're doing in our city. And just wanted to shout you out, Jerry. Just a great job, great job. And thank you for coming out, Mr. Kuderic. Appreciate you. And then just a other couple of quick things. No, it's the SimCOG. And then our County Commissioner, Al Wilson. There is some grant monies available for nonprofits out there. Just to put that out there, if there's some nonprofits, I'm not sure what the deadline is at this point, but if there's any interest in some grants for nonprofits, please contact the City Hall. I know the mayor is aware of it. I'm sure Julie is probably aware of it as well. There is grant monies available out there for nonprofits. Just got to get the finalization on them deadlines, but just keep in mind that there is some, our county commissioner is out there working to get stuff done for our city and these nonprofits. So just out there as well. And then lastly, and then I'm going to close out, our prom toast, let me tell you. Went to the prom toast this year. I remember I've been the last couple of years, and some of the attendance was kind of sketchy at best. But when I tell you this prom toast was amazing, it was so much participation with the students out there. It was an actual red carpet. It was actual parents out there. It was actual students out there, and it was just a great event. It would have been nice to see a little bit more community organizations out there, because I've seen more in the past with community organizations, but it was a great prom toast. So just want to shout out our seniors and our school district, and it was just good to see it come back a little bit better than it has been in the last several years. So kudos to everybody who's on that committee for the prom toast, and congratulations to our seniors as they're coming up on graduation, and just blessings on them and their future endeavors, and blessings in their paths. And Jesus, I always want to say in Jesus' name, but amen, bless our seniors. And then I think that will close me out as far as the chairperson's report. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't. Mr. Jones?
Yes. Madam Chair, a resolution for Mr. Charles Barker, a Romulus resident. He was 90 years old, passed away Sunday morning.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Jones, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for the memorial resolution for Charles Barker. Anybody have any comments regarding Mr. Barker?
Madam Chair, Mr. Barker, I met Mr. Barker some years ago, and I used to stop by. I started stopping by Burger King, just give me a coffee, but sitting up there talking with him, and at that time, especially prior to COVID, it was about seven or eight seniors. We would all come together up there, and everything was just... I mean, we would talk about different things. We saw the problems of the world. And Mr. Barker was always a pleasant person to be around. We used to call him, I used to always call him Big Time Barker, you know? And he was just a well-known gentleman, respectful, full of knowledge, and very low-key. And he'd be missing, so we like to just keep his family in our prayers for comfort and understanding.
Yes, amen. And I didn't know Mr. Barker, but I know his wife. She goes to First Baptist Church, my mom's church. So I know that First Baptist is surrounding her right now during this time, because she does so much in the church and in her community. So just prayers for her and her family during this time. I can't imagine what she's going through right now. But again, I know she's got the strong support of family, her church, and the community. So yeah, just prayers for that family during this time. Any other comments before we move on? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Madam Chair, if that concludes your report, we just need a motion to accept.
I guess I would.
I'll make that motion to accept your report, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Support.
There's been motion by Mrs. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number five is the mayor's report, and presenting the mayor's report is our Chief of Staff, Mike Toko.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk, and good evening, City Council, and to our audience and those at home watching the meeting this evening. I'm pleased to sit in this evening and present the mayor's report. He is at the policy conference this week, so I'm sure he'll have lots of great information to share when he comes back from that meeting. Before we get started, the first thing I'd like to do is ask Michaela Skaska to share our updates from the mayor's office from our own Vanessa Tolliver. So if you'll just watch the video screen. Hello, I'm Vanessa Tolliver, and here are some events happening in Romulus. Romulus BMW Post 78 will welcome back the summer season with a barbecue under the Pavilion on Saturday, May 31st, from 4 to 7 p.m. The cost is $10 and includes your choice of two hot dogs, four hamburgers, plus side dishes. A craft and vendor show is coming to downtown Romulus on Sunday, June 1st, brought to you by local residents and businesses. Enjoy shopping delicious food and handmade crafts from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Don't miss out on your chance to support local and find something special. The next one, Romulus Community Meeting hosted by Mayor McCray, will take place on Tuesday, June 3rd, at Martha Elementary, beginning at 6 p.m. Friday, June 13th, will be a busy day in Romulus. We will gather at the flying pole at the Romulus Historical Park at 11 a.m. for a flying day ceremony and to honor our veterans. Later that night, our district will come alive with the sounds of Louie Lee and will kick off the summer music series in our district, beginning at 7 p.m. It's Romulus Alone Night Night, so make sure to wear your maroon and white and show off your eagle pride. Let's play kickball. Coming up on Saturday, June 14th, is the City of Romulus St. John's Lodge, Number 44, Community Kickball Game. Come and join for a fun-filled day of kickball, beginning at 11 a.m. at St. John's Lodge, Number 44 Park. And help raise funds for the Romulus Drug Task Force. The community is invited to the City of Romulus's 3rd Annual Juneteenth Celebration. Join us on Saturday, June 21st, from 12 to 5 p.m. at the Romulus Historical Park for a day of gathering with friends and families to remember the past and celebrate the future. There will be vendors, music, crafts, food trucks, and fun. Applications for Romulus hometown superhero award nominations are open. Visit our website to find applications and to learn more about each category. Please reach out to unityabb@gmail.com for more details. Thanks, everyone. Remember to like and share us on Facebook and YouTube, or visit our website for more information. Have yourself a lovely evening. Thank you, Vanessa. And now I would like to call up our DDA Director and Economic Development Department Liaison, Jerry Frayer. He just has a quick update for council.
Yeah, so just a good evening, Deputy Clerk, Council, and Chief of Staff. Thank you. I just want to, one, thank all of our volunteers and our businesses, and Councilwoman Tina Tally, for last Thursday was a great opportunity to get into the business. Businesses were excited, and we have some momentum going, so we want to keep that momentum, but SimCOG is working on a video. We will be back Thursday at 11 a.m. at Mary Ann Banks Park. We put the post out there again today, so if anybody's available this Thursday at 11 a.m., we're going to shoot the Mary Ann Banks Park. I know Mike's coming out to do some pickleball, and we got some excitement going on, so we want to show that park being used and utilized this Thursday. So if you can make it, great. We'd love to see you out there. But just thanks again to SimCOG, all our business owners, and all of our volunteers that helped me out that day. Also, I just want to say that we planted flowers on the 14th as well. On Thursday, May 15th, we did all the planting of the flowers. I want to give a heartfelt thank you to Black Stands and Greenhouses, which was also a part of our SimCOG video. So we always want to thank them for just giving the flowers to the community or donating, and also the vegetables for the senior gardens, because it really goes a long way. And I just want to thank a few volunteers that actually helped us that day. One, the DPW, for always assisting and helping us out. But Dave Drew here and Dominic Frisky, who helped me out tremendously. It was hot that day, but they helped get everything distributed where it needed to go. And then Patty Braden, Stephen Dudak, and Michelle from the library as well, and as well as my wife, Jennifer Frayer, always a big help. And Steve, I want to thank you too. Personally, he went into the historical park. We didn't have a lot of help, but Steve went in there and got them planted. They looked beautiful. And then Tony Heinberger did the whole downtown, and I said, "I'll meet you down there," and I never met him down there, because we're not a lot of people, but we got it done. So crazy busy day, but we got it all done. And I just want to thank everybody, because without you guys, you know, I just couldn't do it all by myself. So I just want to thank you guys and appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. With that, I'll go ahead and get into the mayor's report this evening. The first item on his agenda, item 5A, is the Wayne County Subrecipient Agreement with HUD for Community Development Block Grant Program with Wayne County for the fiscal years 2024, 2025. And the request would be for City Council to approve the attached subrecipient agreement with Wayne County for HUD Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for the fiscal years 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,000.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Skaska? I'll make that motion to concur with administration and approve the attached subrecipient agreement with Wayne County for HUD Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for the fiscal years 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,000.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with administration and approve the attached subrecipient agreement with Wayne County for HUD Community Development Block Grant for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,000. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Item 5B is a request for an appointment to the DDA. And with your concurrence, the mayor would like to appoint Jay Kuderic to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire on August 26, 2027.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move that we appoint Jay Kuderic to the DDA board.
Support.
His term will expire in 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. There's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the appointment, and concur with administration and approve the appointment of Jay Kuderic to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire August 26, 2027. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Congratulations, Jay.
Thank you, Council. Item 5C is going to be a change order number one for ITV 23-24-10, which is Mary Ann Banks Park. And with your concurrence, it would be to approve the change order to bid award ITV 23-24-10 for additional work within the City of Romulus, Mary Ann Banks Park, to add court drainage and concrete work from Premier Group Associates with a cost not to exceed $10,000.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe.
I'll make that motion to concur with administration and approve change order number one to bid award ITV 23-24-10 for additional work within the City of Romulus, Mary Ann Banks Park, to add court drainage and concrete work from Premier Group Associates with a cost not to exceed $10,000. I'd just like to say, thanks, Jerry, for calling today and giving us a lowdown on all that.
Absolutely. There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Crowe, to concur with administration and approve the change order number one to bid award ITV 23/24-10 for additional work within the City of Romulus, Mary Ann Banks Park, to add court drainage and concrete work from Premier Group Associates with a cost not to exceed $10,000. Ms. Abdo, discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank Jerry, as well as the mayor. This is what I have gotten the most calls about. It's commonly referred to as Lake McCray. And the mayor promised me, as Jerry did, that they would do something about it, and they are doing something. So the calls I've received did not go in vain. Thank you.
Ms. Abdo, any other discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Item 5D is a request for road closure for our Juneteenth activities. With your concurrence, we respectfully request that council authorize the closure of Hunt Street, beginning at Bibbin Street and ending at the entrance to the post office on Hunt Street from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, for the 3rd Annual Juneteenth Community Celebration.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jones?
I move to concur with the administration authorization, the closure of Hunt Street, beginning at Bibbin Street and ending at the entrance of the post office on Hunt Street from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, for the 3rd Annual Juneteenth Community Celebration.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Jones, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with administration and authorize the closure of Hunt Street, beginning at Bibbin Street and ending at the entrance to the post office on Hunt Street from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, for the 3rd Annual Juneteenth Community Celebration. Any discussion? Hearing now, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. On item 5E, after many, many long months and a lot of hard work, we are pleased to present the mayor's General and Special Appropriations Act and Tax Levy Authorization for Fiscal Year 2025 and 2026. With your concurrence, this would be to adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and Tax Levy Authorization for the City of Romulus in the 34th District Court for Fiscal Years 2025 and 2026.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe.
I'll make that motion to concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and Tax Levy Authorization for the City of Romulus in the 34th District Court, fiscal year 2025, 2026, as submitted by Mayor McCray. I'd just like to thank everyone for all their hard work.
Support. And I have a question.
Okay. There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, to concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and Tax Levy Authorization for the City of Romulus in 34th District Court, fiscal year 2025 through 2026, as submitted by Mayor McCray. Mr. Wadsworth?
If I could to, Maria, the operating mileage didn't change, right? It stayed at 4.9? It did or it didn't? What did, go from where to where?
Go ahead and pop to the podium, Maria. On the very last page...
I'm looking at the last page. It's 4.4, it's 9.40.
Zero. Yes.
This is like an eye test, but...
Okay.
And what was it last year?
It was the same. It was 9.4063.
That's what I said. It didn't change.
It did not change.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, and again, Maria and Gary. I've been saying this over and over and over again. I just can't say it enough, because I sat there and I saw the work, and I saw y'all doing the work. I saw the department heads and the directors and all. I just, it's just amazing to see people know their craft. I mean, do people just know their craft? They know, they run in their departments, and it's just, and I thank the mayor for his team and Julie. I just can't say it enough, because to sit there and witnesses, it's just, I wish people would witness it, because it's an amazing thing to see. So thank you again. And with that, we're going to go ahead, and there's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, to concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and Tax Levy Authorization for the City of Romulus in 34th District Court, fiscal year 2025 and 2026, as submitted by Mayor McCray. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Great job.
Thank you, Council.
Great job.
Last request we have this evening on the mayor's report, item 5F, is a request to piggyback on the Omni Partners Contract Zones LLC for purchase of six Microsoft Office 2024 LTSC Professional Plus licenses and 48 Microsoft Office 2024 LTSC Standard licenses. And this would be at a total cost of $19,726.44.
Need a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
to concur with administration and consent to the piggyback on Omni Partners Contract 01-152 for the purchase of six Microsoft Office 2024 LTSC Professional Plus licenses and 48 Microsoft Office 2024 LTSC Standard licenses from Zones LLC for a total cost of $19,726.44.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Crowe, to concur with administration and consent to piggyback on the Omni Partners Contract 01-152 for the purchase of six Microsoft 2024 LTSC Professional Plus licenses and 48 Microsoft Office 2024 LTSC Standard licenses from Zones LLC for the total cost of $19,726.44. Any discussion?
One comment?
Yes.
Thanks, Steve, for the phone call today, even though I didn't really have a lot of questions or anything, but I do appreciate administration calling and always double-checking, make sure if we got questions or something we don't understand or anything like that, or just kind of explaining things a little bit more in simpler terms sometimes than what's all in print. And I do appreciate that very much.
And any other discussion? Steve, the same. I didn't get to call you back, but you know your craft. And I remember these discussions in the budget meetings, so thank you. With that said, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council, and that concludes the mayor's report this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. Number six is the clerk's report. There are only two action items under the clerk's report. Action item 6A is a study session request. Maria Ferris, Finance Director, requests a 30-minute study session for Monday, June 9th, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. to discuss the 2017 CIP bond refunding. The date and time are available for this request.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move that we have a study session on Monday, June 9th, at 6:45 p.m., requested by the clerk.
Need a second? Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Jones, for the 30-minute study session, requested by Maria Ferris, Finance Director, for Monday, June 9th, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. to discuss the 2017 CIP bonding refund. The date and time are available for this request. Any discussion? Hearing now, Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. The last action item is approval of the municipal fee schedule for the upcoming fiscal year. So it's requested that council approve the 2025-2026 City of Romulus Proposed Municipal Fee Schedule as Presented, to be effective July 1, 2025.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the 2025-2026 City of Romulus Proposed Municipal Fee Schedule as Presented, to be effective July 1, 2025.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Jones, to approve the 2025-2026 City of Romulus Proposed Municipal Fee Schedule as Presented, to be effective July 1, 2025. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. That concludes the clerk's report. Thank you, City Council. That concludes the clerk's report. Number seven is the treasurer, treasurer's report. Treasurer Paige has notified our office that she has no items to report under her report. So that brings us to number eight, public comment. This is the portion of the agenda for those in the audience who would like to address the City Council. The rules to address the City Council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you'd like to address the City Council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note, members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the consent of the chair. Madam Chair, we have not received a request to speak public comment card.
Thank you, Dejawn. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak? Okay, we will close that portion out.
So noted, Madam Chair. Number nine is unfinished business. Number ten is new business. Number eleven is warrant, for approval is warrant number twenty-five dash ten.
To the chair, I'd like to make a motion. We pay warrant twenty-five dash ten in the following amounts. General Fund, one hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. Public Safety Fund, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars, thirty-three cents. Cable TV, ten thousand, nine hundred, eighteen dollars, eight cents. Merriman Road Special Assessment, five thousand, twenty-three dollars, twelve cents. Garbage and Rubbish Collection Fund, one dollar, sixty-seven cents. Oakwood SAD, one hundred, eighty-three dollars, fifty-five cents. Tax Increment Finance Authority, sixteen thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars, two cents. Downtown Development Authority, thirty thousand, nine hundred, six dollars, eleven cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, four thousand, thirty-eight dollars, thirty cents. Nine-one-one Service Fund, six hundred, forty-eight dollars, eighteen cents. Drug Law Enforcement Fund, four hundred, thirty-three dollars, thirty-two cents. Law Enforcement Federal, seventeen thousand, seven hundred, seventeen dollars. Library Fund, five thousand, six hundred, ninety-nine dollars, forty-seven cents. Water and Sewer Fund, three hundred, ninety thousand, nine hundred, ninety-five dollars, twenty-nine cents. Motor Vehicle, sixteen thousand, one hundred, eighty-nine dollars, thirty-five cents. Technology Services, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars, sixty-eight cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, five thousand, one hundred, four dollars, forty-two cents. Revolving Fund, eleven thousand, one hundred, eighty-six dollars. Totalling All Funds, six hundred, fifty-one thousand, one hundred, ninety-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Crowe, to pay for the approval warrant number twenty-five dash ten for checks presented in the amount of six hundred, fifty-one thousand, one hundred, ninety-seven dollars, one hundred, ninety-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any discussion? Hearing now, Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, warrant approved.
Thank you, City Council. Number twelve is communications.
No communication? So sounding none of it, I say no communication. I get to do another tip. Moving on.
All right. If there's no more communications, number thirteen is adjournment. The time is eight oh four.
Show move.
Support.
It's been motion by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Mr. Crowe, to adjourn this meeting. Mr. Wasworth.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, we are, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.